All right. Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. It is Tuesday, March 19th at 5:32. We'll officially call this special board meeting to order. So with that, we'll do a quick roll call of the folks who are here. My name is Carly Hoover. I use it in pronouns. I'm the Director of District One.
Dave Larson, Director of District Five.
Carly Simpson, Director of District Three.
Thank you, and hopefully we'll have Director Proctor joining us momentarily. All right, so welcome to our guests who are joining us. I was about to say virtually and in person, but we are not in person. It feels a little weird to not be in person at this point, but welcome. Thanks for being here. All right, we'll move to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the agenda is approved. So then we'll move to our first item of the agenda, which is the first of two Director District Two interviews. So we'll give just a second for they can't get to be added as a panelist and then we'll get going. Hey Teresa, welcome. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, very great. Hi.
Hi.
Welcome. First, I just want to say I am so sorry that this is happening virtually. Ideally, we would be in person. But as you may or may not be aware, our district administrative building had a flood in it a few weeks ago, or I guess a month or two ago at this point. So we're kind of been bouncing around from spaces. So we weren't able to secure an in-person space. So we're here virtually, which again, not super ideal, but thank you for so much for being willing and flexible. And we are glad that you are here. I just noticed that our student representative, Alex, has joined us. I want to get him as a panelist. So again, welcome. You're here interviewing for the Director District Two, the open position that will serve in that position for, I believe, full term up until 2027. Director Larson, that's correct, right? It should be in line with the
Actually, I think anybody that gets appointed, I think, has to be go back to the ballot at the next available time, which would be two years. So I think it's basically a two-year. And then, and then there's, you're on the ballot again, so.
Oh my, great. Thanks for that. I just want to make sure, you know, clarify that. Thank you very much. So you're here to interview for that position. I'm really excited to have, to hear from you a little bit. So we've got a set of questions. And just to confirm, and I didn't confer with Deb before, but were these questions sent out to folks?
Yes.
They were. Okay, perfect. So you should have received the questions. I'll also copy them into the chat as we're moving along. That way, you can hear it and see it as well. And we'll kind of rotate around to ask questions. And just for the sake of order, I'll kind of go with what's on my screen. So I'll ask the first one, and then it'll go with Director Larson, and then Alex, and then Director Simpson, and then we'll come back to me. So with that, I'd love you to introduce yourself, and then tell us something about yourself and your involvement with the Taquilla Schools and the school district community.
Yes, do I start? Is it for Teresa?
That's for you. So sorry, yes.
Hi, I'm Teresa. I'm not sure if you can see me, but hello. I have lived in Taquilla for quite a while, I think the last 10 years. I'm a teacher and a mom. I don't know, I didn't necessarily know that this was a position that is going to be voted on. So I'm kind of, yeah, mainly I just really, I've got a son who is going to be in kindergarten next year. And so I was looking for like more information about the district. And I was like, oh, there's a District Two position. That'll be a cool way to volunteer and help out with the community and feel kind of connected to the community because for parents of younger kids, there's not a whole lot, as far as what I know, there's not a whole lot of opportunities to connect with the district. So I was hoping to, I don't know, try to, I guess, find a space where I could help support the district in any way that I can. So right now, yeah, I'm not as involved with the Taquilla Schools. We do go to, we're members of the Taquilla Pool, so we go there a lot. And I was, I grew up in, also in Washington, in the Federal Way School District. So I'm definitely familiar with public schools. But yeah, I'm, I'm basically just trying to make the school district good for, or, you know, do what I can to help, I guess.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay, so question number two, and just to let you know, I guess, I guess we have nineteen of these, so.
Sorry, I'll go, I'll go faster.
No, that's fine. That's fine. You're doing great. In your application, you shared why you want to be a director. Will you please share with us what strengths do you see yourself bringing to the Board of Directors?
Yeah, so I think that a good, a successful board is made up of a diverse members of the community. And I would say I, while I don't have necessarily board experience, I think I'm like an average member of the community. I'm a mom, I'm a teacher. I'm just like a basic representation of like, oh, I'm a parent here. So I would really, I think I would bring like, kind of more of a parent and a teacher, like advocate for those sides of things. And yeah, yeah, sorry, keep in brief.
Where's Alex? To you next, my friend.
Okay, question number three. Please share with us your perception of what the role of the, wait one second. Please share with us your perception of what the role of a school board director is.
Yeah, so I have, somebody in my family is a school board director for a private school. So they do a lot of, as far as what I know, they do a lot of looking at the budget, trying to balance the budget, putting policy in place that, or voting, I guess, on policy that helps balance the budget and helps push through the goals that come from the superintendent, I guess, push the, whatever the district's mission statement is, keeping that at the forefront, and then, I guess, advocating for for new policy and yeah, advocating for new policy, budgeting, and yeah, that's, that's kind of my perception of what it is. And then, yeah, doing your best to be a member of the community, attending things, supporting the schools in any way that you can.
Great, thank you. Question number four is, school board directors make many decisions. What would the prime considerations be for a director when making a decision?
The prime consideration, I think the most important thing is keeping the goal, whatever the main goal of your district is at the forefront. And so what are we trying to achieve? Whatever our mission statement, I guess, or whatever the, the goal is, keeping that at the front, and then also remembering to remain respectful. And, yeah, just remembering to remain respectful and listen to other opinions, listen to members of your community, and try to advocate for those when you can.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, question five. Please share your thoughts about the involvement of the school directors in day-to-day operation decisions of the Taquilla School District.
Um, yeah, I actually don't think about directors necessarily should be involved with day-to-day. I think that that would be, to me, more of something that the teachers would kind of take over because they're the ones, the educators that are working with students day-to-day are the ones that know what's going on in the schools. So I think that they should feel more empowered to take on more of that role. I think that the school, in my opinion, the school board should be more of like, less of a day-to-day and like operational role, and more of looking at big picture stuff.
Okay, thanks. What do you believe are the key elements of a cohesive and effective Board of Directors?
Yeah, key elements of a cohesive board, I would say, come first of all, at the very basis, just a mutual level of respect and kindness and willingness to listen to other opinions would create, like, creating an environment where you feel safe to speak freely and speak your mind. And then I think a good board would take the time to attend, you know, professional development and work, always working to further their knowledge on the district, further their knowledge on education, what's new in education, and just always, always trying to evaluate what they're doing to get to the next level, I guess, to improve, always improving.
Okay. Question number seven, please describe your current thinking about social justice and wish, and racial equity in the education system in general.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's a big question. I would say just for a basic level, I think that there is an unequal amount of resources. I think that there is, I think that in schools in general, especially public schools, and especially, I feel like in Washington, there's inequity in the school system. There is inequity with like racial inequity. And so I think that kind of one of the main things that we should be focused on is to try to put policies in place to make it more equitable.
Okay, thank you. Question number eight, Taquilla School District is committed to advancing racial and educational equity, and this continues to be a place of growth for us. What experience do you have working with to advance racial equity for yourself and within an organization or educational setting?
Yeah, so for myself, I do a lot of, well, first I acknowledge, I take the time to acknowledge where I come from and privileges that I have. And then I take a lot of time to listen. I listen to other members of my community. I listen to other members of my teaching team. I love to chat with people, a diverse range of people that, you know, I wouldn't, I, yeah, I just, I love to hear from others' experiences. And I think that coming from a place of wanting to learn and grow really helps, I guess, really helps myself, my own personal. As far as within an organization, I haven't really had that much experience, but I am very open, willing to learn and willing to listen to everybody.
Great, thank you very much. Question number nine, we're about halfway there. What do you see as the board's role in leading for racial equity?
Uh, yeah, so the school board is the, they're, they're the advocate, right? You're advocating for those that need a voice. So you're, you're taking the time to listen, you're taking the time to learn, maybe even for people that aren't attending the meetings and aren't, you know, finding ways to reach out to all the entire community and figuring out where the needs are, and then working to fulfill those needs.
Okay. Please share your thoughts about the relationship between the superintendent and the school board.
Um, well, I think that the superintendent and the school board need to have open communication and mutual respect. I also think that the superintendent, to me, is kind of at the top. They're making, they're setting the goals that they want everybody to achieve. And then I think the board works to to help figure out how we can meet these goals and what, how we can make them attainable. I also think it's kind of a relationship where you keep each other accountable, hold each other accountable.
Mr. Alex. Again, I'm pulling up the questions. Question eleven, what do you consider to be the priority areas of accountability for a superintendent?
Yeah, to be honest, that question confused me a little bit. I did, I guess, what the superintendent's role, I mean, yeah, I guess the superintendent is at the top. They need to make sure that the that the community is doing well, that the schools are meeting, you know, their goals. And, yeah, I think I, I would love to kind of learn more about what the superintendent does. You know, I did attend, hey, I did attend public schools. I attended public school in Cutter Way, and I never really knew what superintendent did in all my time at public school. I wasn't really sure. So, yeah, I would love to, you know, I am someone that's open to learning more about this role. So I would love to kind of figure out what the superintendent does and then figure that out as I go.
Okay, question number 12. Is it important for a director to know what the parents and other community members are thinking about the schools? And what ideas do you have on how to improve outreach to all parents and increase community involvement in our schools?
Yeah, that's one of the things that I was saying at the beginning. I was feeling like, well, I would love to know how I can be involved in the school because there's not a whole lot of, I guess, resources when you're searching online to figuring out like, hmm, how can I be involved? I would love to maybe do like surveys, because there's parents, I feel like there's some parents and some community members that will attend, you know, these meetings that are online and some of the bigger events, but not everyone does, and not everyone has the time or the availability to attend things in person. So I think like surveys are great and more resources online to connect with a broader array of families and parents and students. I think that more online resources would be great, surveys especially.
Great, thank you.
All right, thirteen. Have you had the opportunity to review the district's budget? If so, what is your opinion of how funds are currently being spent?
Um, no, I have not, unfortunately. I have not, but I'm definitely, that's something I'm definitely willing to learn about and look at in the future.
If you had the ability to introduce one practice procedure process into the Taquilla School District at this time, what would it be?
Yeah, so I would love more, more things online. For example, like for me personally, one of the reasons why I'm, I had a little trouble like accessing the budget because I don't have access to a computer. I'm using my phone on mobile, which a lot of families do. You're using your phone to access things. So I wasn't quite able to really navigate the website to the best of my ability on mobile. So I would love it if it was a little easier to navigate, and I would love it if there were more information, like maybe pictures, maybe less, I don't know, less words, more pictures, more, because a lot of families, you know, are also not native English speakers too. So I would just love maybe easier time with the website, maybe some little updates.
Question number fifteen, if you are attending a school or community event, and a parent makes statements critical of a teacher, how would you respond?
Um, yeah, so if someone said something to me regarding a teacher, I would, first of all, I would, you know, if they're upset, I would validate how they're feeling. I would say, oh, yeah, I could understand. That's really frustrating for you. Um, I also would be very hesitant to speak on about any teachers. I want to encourage, you know, positivity and, you know, kindness. So I would definitely recommend, you know, it depends on what they're saying and what the issue is. But I would definitely follow, you know, protocol. Who is it that we're usually talking to when like there's an issue with the teacher? Is it the principal? Okay, why don't we send an email? Could we send an email to your principal? Or, you know, whatever the usual chain of action is, I would encourage them to do that in the kindest way possible.
All right, thank you. Being a director is a large commitment of time. Okay, here, sorry, just clicked off there. We're on question number sixteen.
Okay.
How much time each week are you willing to spend? And that you would expect to spend on a school board activities?
Yeah, to me, a school board, you know, volunteering your time, I think it would be so wonderful to do kind of like a part-time thing. So like, minimum 20 hours a week is what I would expect to volunteer for. But, you know, obviously, if there is events or anything, maybe more than that. But yeah, that's kind of what I would assume around, like, basically like a part-time job.
So you're thinking 20 hours is kind of the norm per week?
I mean, as far as I know, I don't know, you know, I'm not positive, but that's what I would get, but you know.
Yeah, I think that's what it's asking, kind of, what do you, what do you expect? What do you?
Yeah, yeah, that's what, yes.
All right, thank you.
I know that's a weird question, because if you don't have a whole lot of context, it can be difficult to answer for sure. Okay, so seventeen, how should elected officials such as school board directors ensure that their entire constituency has a voice and not just those who are vocal and claim to speak up for the majority?
Yeah, um, that's where I really like connecting with people via like surveys and and things like that. Because, yeah, a lot of times the people that are really vocal will let you know. They'll come to events. They'll, you know, seek you out to talk to you. So I would definitely do like student surveys, teacher surveys, and ask the questions like, do you think everyone is being represented? If so, what do you think can be done? You know, asking asking members of the community because they would know, right? They would say, oh, you know, I think this group isn't being represented. Or, you know, just taking the time, even taking the time to go seek places and things out that you normally wouldn't attend to kind of find, you know, a more variety of community members too.
Okay, if a situation, discussion, or agenda item were, were, were to come to the board, that could potentially be a conflict of interest for you, how would you handle it?
Oh, a conflict of interest? Um, yeah, I would, I think I would say, hey, this seems like a conflict of interest. I, I generally don't have a problem with saying, you know, how I'm feeling. And if there's, I'm assuming maybe it would, there would be a conflict of interest, maybe like regarding funding or something like that. But any, any instance where I feel like, oh, this isn't, this is, this feels like a conflict, I think I would speak up and follow. You know, maybe there's a committee that has a process for doing that, or me, you know, I would follow whatever the normal, I guess, the normal route to go when there's a conflict. But yeah, speaking up and saying, hey, this feels like a conflict. Can I switch, switch to something else, or whatever the case may be?
Okay, so question number nineteen is kind of an optional question. Is there anything else you would like to share with us about you as a school director, as a U.S. school director candidate that may have they could have been failed to be addressed in the previous questions?
Um, yeah, well, no, not really. But I just, I guess I just want to reiterate, I'm, I'm so thankful. Thank you so much for letting me interview. This was really a great experience, even regardless what happens. So I really appreciate it. Thank you so much for taking the time. And I'm just a mom and a teacher. So, yeah, I don't know a whole lot. But I do think, you know, I do represent kind of an average community member. And I would love to see, you know, a wide variety of members on the board representing, you know, representing different socioeconomic status, representing, you know, families that, families, teachers. So, yeah, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much. I really appreciate your time.
Can I just ask what school you're, you're a teacher at?
Yeah, so I am a preschool teacher. I actually am at a private school. It's Montessori, private Montessori in Seattle.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you so very much, Teresa, for being here. And it was really great to just get to know you a little bit through your responses. And I'll be planning to reach out, regardless of the decision that we make as a board, but I'll reach out here in the next few days with kind of next steps for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. I really appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a great rest of your week. All right. So we'll move now to the second portion of our agenda, which is our second interview with Ms. Kate Krueller. So welcome, Kate. Glad that you're here. Glad to see you virtually. I want to just start by acknowledging the fact that we are virtual and that that kind of stinks a little bit. So I wish that this is definitely something that I would have preferred to do in person. But nonetheless, here we are. So thanks for being here and joining us on Zoom. So we have nineteen questions for you. One second. We have nineteen questions for you, and we'll rotate, as you probably know, asking those questions. And team, we'll just kind of go in the same order if that works for folks. And that way, since I think we kind of have the order down already. So I'd love it if you would just start by introducing yourself and then telling us about your involvement with the Taquilla Schools and the school district community as a whole.
Well, thank you for inviting me for an interview today. And for the first question, I just, I'll let you know that I'm an information technology management worker. I work for King County. And I put in core competency systems. So I either put in brand-new systems that we build ourselves or commercial off-the-shelf systems, or I can also work through projects that we just are updating or enhancing one way or the other. And an example of one of the projects that I work on is King County Sheriff's Office 911 CAD system needs to be replaced. So we're working on something for the next two or three years to get that in place. I know a lot of people in Taquilla. I put people first. Many people know me because I stay very active in the community. And I want to just comment that I've also been involved in terms of schools in the levy campaign since 2012. I attended the city council meeting to help promote that. I know you can't actively do that as a board member, so I kind of got it out of my system this year. I also helped put the get people to endorse that campaign. And then I personally can't, you know, went out and door-bailed for it. I've always, I am a product of public schools. Um, I've always, I am a product of public schools. Uh, um, and a few other things you may or may not know, I worked on, uh, the board of the Taquilla pantry for about eight years. Uh, and I was with the startup team when they had the snack pack program first began. And I used to take time off from work to help, um, pass out the packs to the classrooms at Cascade View Elementary, which is, uh, the neighborhood that I live in. So I think that's maybe enough, I don't want to spend, I'm worried about time consumption here. Um, but, uh, I guess a couple more things, uh, I'm one of the council members who, uh, never missed a civics class invitation, uh, from when I was on city council mem, council. I attended all the Black Student Union meetings during COVID, they invited me and I was the only council member that responded, I guess. Was very involved in our Taquilla teens and very excited to help them, uh, get opportunities two times to go to Washington DC, um, meet with our senators and our representatives. And, uh, two of those students today are on the city council, so kind of happy with that. And I just believe in making space and centering youth's voices, because it's critical, um, to a well-run school district and our future.
So, um, this question is probably going to be a little bit duplicative, but maybe you can add on. In your application, you shared why you want to be a director, will you please share with us the strengths? What strengths do you see yourself bringing to the board of directors?
So I'm pretty, uh, you know, I've been in district two for thirty-two years. So I feel I know the residents pretty well there, unless they're just recently moved in. I'm comfortable doorbelling there, uh, some of the attributes I, um, bring to the table is that I understand the context and the relationship between Taquilla School District and the city of Taquilla. Um, I'm well-connected, uh, regionally, statewide, and nationally, uh, through my networks. I got them through, uh, council member work, but they're just the same. As far as, uh, the ability to get audiences with, uh, people who are elected at those levels and to collaborate. Um, I would be a turnkey appointee, I have training in open public meetings acts. I'm knowledgeable about the Public Disclosure Commission requirements and processes. Um, let's see, um, I have deep municipal governance, uh, experience and it lends itself to understanding the distinctions and the roles between the governing body and, for instance, TSD administration. Uh, and if it helps, I represent three protected classes and would, um, love to help the TSD board balance the gender, uh, diversity a little better.
Okay, one second. Um, next question, question number three, please share with us your perception of what the role of a school board director is?
You know, I, this is asked a couple of different ways during these questions. So I went to a very simple personal level, you need to be a citizen of our community to even be a board member. Um, and you need to represent the people in your district, you want, you need to collaborate across the districts. But you need to be in tune and understand what people want from their school district. Um, it, you carry the vote, an ability to vote as the legislative member of the board. Uh, and you're responsible for, and I, I wrote down a few things, to hire, supervise, and evaluate the superintendent. Uh, to set the vision, the mission, and strategic goals for the district. Uh, to review, revise, and adopt policies, uh, establish and oversee the budget. And, uh, you know, um, monitor how your policies are implemented within that budget. Those are a few of the things that you do as a board member.
Thank you. Number four, school board directors make many decisions. What should the prime considerations be for a director when making a decision?
I know this will sound a little hokey, but I believe it with all my heart. Uh, I'm at the very core of everything I'm doing. I'm going to be interested in improving access to all the great things our district has to offer for all students, particularly those furthest from educational justice. Um, I want to represent what the community wants from their schools. Uh, I want to make space and center youth voices, because I think it's critical to a well-run school district. I'm excited, this would be the first board I've ever been on that has student members and I just think that's so cool. And I'd love the, the two that are on it and I look forward to that kind of engagement. Um, there are fiduciary obligations to, um, create a balanced budget and stay within it, uh, remain in compliance with the law. And, you know, in general, every single time you're looking at something, you have to say, is it fair, just, and defensible? Can you, can you answer those three things? Uh, then you're probably on the right, uh, track.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, and I'd love to get, um, Director Proctor in the mix here. Um, if you, no, okay, that's all right, that's all right too, you can pass on asking the questions if you like. Um, but let me know, uh, via message if you want to jump in. Um, so question five, uh, please share your thoughts about the involvement of school directors in the day-to-day operations of the Taquilla School District?
So I believe that's the, of the superintendent, their staff, and faculty. Don't want to interrupt in that, we are laypeople, we have other jobs or things to do. And that is, that is strictly their role, if they want advice from us, I'm sure they'll ask. But, um, not ready to over, over, um, extend in that direction. And so the only thing I can think of is bringing back community, parent, and student feedback. Um, if they consider it useful, and it's just, it's a matter of their style.
Hey, what do you believe are the key elements of a cohesive and effective board of directors?
Well, hopefully they are all really nice and kind to each other, I want to get along. And in this case, I mean, in any case, you're neighbors. And so you should act like your neighbors and want to work collaboratively. But you should establish clear, uh, and you should establish and honor clear roles. Um, just, just, you know, uh, you need to communicate authentically and effectively. I believe in pulse checks and evaluating frequently what you're doing together, just, you know. And then, uh, have a code of civility, uh, you know, whether you formalize it in agreement or just come to some kind of agreement, uh, I think that's really important. And then, uh, build consensus, those are some strong elements that you need for a board.
Okay, um, question number seven, please describe your current thinking about social justice and racial equity in the education system in general?
Well, we can't offer enough education, in my opinion. Um, there's so much to learn and dismantle and reimagine. And I, I expect through those efforts, which aren't always easy or comfortable, that we'll end up with a, a greater offering as a school district, so it's worth it. That's pretty much how I feel about it.
Great, um, number eight, Taquilla School District is committed to advancing racial and educational equity. On this, and this continues to be a place of growth for us. What experience do you have working to advance racial equity for yourself and within an organization or educational setting?
I, I follow up this answer with my statement before, you cannot learn enough. Um, and I think it's really important, um, to get involved wherever you work, whatever neighborhood you're on, whatever, you know, commission, council, board you're on, uh, to try to figure out ways that you can im- improve in this area. So, um, I am overwhelmingly involved at work. So in my case, I got into a program called Government Follow My Lead and it was literally set up for women as advancement in, uh, leadership. It's a program that's statewide. Um, I'm also on the King County IT ESJ Green Belt Program. And so I'm working with a partner right now, using lead, you know, some proven practices to improve how KCIT offers its training, because we know there's, we're collecting data and we know there's some issues there. Um, I've gone to a leader learning lab just this year, cultivating values and, uh, team purpose. Um, and then I, I took time on my own to go through mindful leadership training, which I think is invaluable. Um, I've been, uh, to courses on building gender-inclusive spaces for managers and supervisors. Uh, King County offers a course that's required, which I sublute, which is, we are racially just. And it talks about the King County values, uh, along those lines. Um, I've been to an RSJ fundamentals webinar this year. I attended anti-racism, um, course on challenging inequities, which is not, it's, it's something that we learn and practice, and then understanding and preventing microaggressions. Um, I don't know, a lot of people have already attended the Power of Illusion, but I was a review for me and I was glad to go through it one more time. So at work, I volunteer on our KCIT SG ESJ, uh, community team. So we're constantly trying to change the practices that we have for the better. And I'm also on the King County Disability Equity Network. List, but I got involved in a lot of things.
Thank you.
Oh, that's me, sorry, um, what do you see as the board's role in leading for racial equity?
I just put out a list, um, board should lead by example, educated on implicit and explicit bias. Uh, we need to learn, boards need to learn how to lead cultural change, so there's, there's some work there. Boards need to look at any systemic processes that create a barrier to community involvement. Uh, boards need to, and I, when I say boards, I mean, school boards, because you wrote, you had boards in the question. Boards need to look at how the purpose and goals of equity work, uh, with staff and community members is being communicated. Um, board's got to be aware of the demographics of their students and staff. Look at the data, make data-driven decisions that, um, improves equity balances. And then, um, the boards, uh, have to take an honest look at their hiring practices and how they might be impacting the recruiting and retention of effective teachers of diverse backgrounds. So those, those are just a few.
Please share your thoughts about the relationship between the superintendent and the school board?
So the school board is a legislative governing body that serves as community representatives. And it's the final authority in the district and the only answer to the superintendent of public instruction, who has oversight over boards across the state. Um, it sets, uh, it sets the vision, the mission, the strategic goals for the district. The board also hires, supervises, um, and evaluates the superintendent's performance. It reviews, revises, and adopts policies, it establishes over, um, and oversees the budget. Um, a couple of these I mentioned earlier before, it monitors the district progress toward goal. And because it only can act as a group, it confers this to the superintendent, um, sufficient legal authority to implement the board's policies and run the day-to-day operations of the school district. But that's how I see it.
Okay, um, this is question number ten, please share your thoughts about the relationship between the superintendent and the school board?
We're on eleven.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Um, question eleven, what do you consider to be the priority areas of accountability for the superintendent?
Superintendent. I think the, the principal areas of, uh, uh, priority areas of accountability for the suits superintendent is to the board. Um, yeah, and de facto, it's to the state. Um, so in terms of priority, I think there ought to be clear communications. Um, we are laypeople on the board, so we depend on the administration to help us craft some of the budgets we passed, some of the policies that we're making, we try to give direction on where we want to go. But when it comes to putting meat on the skeleton, the framework, the superintendent is doing that work and constantly coming back, giving us status, making sure we understand what's going on, escalating when there's issues, um, and offering solutions to problems, so we can work our way through decisions that the board has to make. And I guess the standard answer would be to follow the priorities that the board already approved, right? But I think it's a lot about the interchange, accountability is being transparent to me.
All right, can I ask question twelve there, board? It's, it is important for a director to know what the parents and other community members are thinking about the schools. So, uh, Kate, what ideas do you have on how to improve outreach to all the parents and an increased community involvement in our schools?
So initially, I would promote events that they can attend and opportunities to see what our schools offer. Um, I enjoy talking with people in my area, so I would work to hold listening sessions. I don't mind whether it's, I mean, it would be, it would be my district, but I, this could be done a little broader if we wanted to, um, as multiple, you know, but not surpassing the, um, uh, the laws, in terms of how many of us can be bet together at once. But I just, I, I just think it would be, uh, a good outlet to hold more listening sessions that people can attend in person or online. And I would do what I could to provide a method for people to opt in, um, to send out either a school letter that I'm getting from the school or my own newsletter on what, what is going on and what it means for our district, or pushing out information on changes that are happening that I think they might find interesting or key calendar events that they might want to know about, so that'd be where I'd start.
Thank you. Thank you. Thirteen, have you had an opportunity to review the district's budget? If so, what is your opinion of how the funds are currently being spent?
Well, yes, I, I have not attended every session, but I've attended and reviewed video of some of the meetings that Taquilla School District has been holding about the current budget, the outlook, and what changes are ahead. I'm, uh, keenly aware that at the beginning of the year, the snapshot trends for our expenses, we're going to go beyond, um, revenues in the upcoming years. Uh, I know that there are some key factors that lead to that. Taquilla's situation is largely, largely due to, uh, enrollment decreases, like I think it's around ten or eleven percent, which leads to a declining funding from the state of Washington. We're also experiencing the withdrawal or the sunsetting of federal funding that came during the pandemic to help us with sustainability and recovering from it. Uh, and we're also starting to experience increasing staffing costs and everything else cost through inflation. So, uh, the results of this was a negative shortfall, uh, that has to be addressed. So I know because of the meetings I attended, that there's an agreement with the Washington State, um, Office of Superintendent, um, that placed the Taquilla School District under binding conditions. And it's for about a two-year period based on the trajectory and the, um, uh, solutions that the board and the superintendent are, have come up with. Uh, I think that's healthy, there's other school districts who are going to be under the same binding conditions for up to five years. So I feel very positive about, uh, the discipline and the efforts that are going to be made. Um, by being in this agreement, this Taquilla is allowed to borrow money and receive guidance on how to meet the needs of our students while they're cutting their costs. Um, we have a interim superintendent and a, what I, who I think is great. And I also think the chief financial officer who just stepped in, uh, is also putting his shoulder to the wheel. Uh, that's, you know, makes the, the journey a little tougher, but both of them are, to me, uh, more than qualified to get us through this. And they're working hard to comply with the guidelines and emerge, uh, in a couple of years in a healthier state. So that's what I've been witnessing, I felt privileged to, to be able to, um, follow along and I feel good about the healthy steps we're trying to take.
Thank you.
Thanks, all right, uh, question fourteen. Thanks, all right, uh, question 14. If you have the ability to introduce one practice procedure process into the district at this time, what would it be?
So I don't want to arrive with, with a know-it-all approach. I'd be the new one on the, the board. Um, and I'd be learning about things I don't know about the school district and the governance and how it works. Um, so. The thing I say next is because I don't know. Uh, what all programs and things we do. But if I was asked, um, professionally speaking, one of the most useful tools I've ever encountered is organize. Organizational change management. And it's an approach to prepare, support and help. Individuals, teams and organizations for change. And I think we're doing some of the practices. But there's like this. These principles that I was lucky enough to learn. And there's four of them, one's uh, just understand the change. Plan for the change, communicate the change and implement the change. And I think we all do it in our. In certain ways, but there are really effective and efficient ways of doing this and. That would be the only thing I'd offer up, but you know, as soon as I talk to the superintendent, she'll probably tell me she's already. Got proxy training or something like it and has been implementing it. I know she's. Done a remarkable job of improving communications. The question is. Are some of, some of those. Methods of helping people adapt um, to change in place?
If you are attending a school or a community event and a parent makes statements critical of a teacher, how would you respond?
Well, oddly, thank goodness I wasn't a board member, but I, I did get this experience when I was doorbellin' for the Yes Takula Love campaign. And I'm hoping to bring some of the things of feedback that we had back to the board. Uh, in the process, if I'm honored and selected. Um, but I, the things I keep in my head are, most situations are unique. So I think it's important to make space and to listen and to understand what the situation is. I try to lean in and be authentic. I definitely show empathy. And want people to know I care because I do. Um. I try to practice. Both and thinking as opposed to either or thinking because. I've grown to learn that uh, multiple realities can exist at the same time. So there's no, no, no. Their, their worldview is valid. Um. I don't take what they say personally. I don't let, I don't want to personify the school district or teachers or anybody else. Uh, and I, I see, uh, I look. Hard to see if they've got a suggestion or solution to offer. Because that's something that I might be able to work with. I write down facts as I learn them and I would, I would uh, share. A way to stay in touch with me. So that they can know that I, I, I'm following up and it's important that it's facts. Otherwise, there's not much to follow up on. Um. And I know I do not have any direct authority over our faculty. So if serious facts arise, I would try to find the channel that I learned from you guys. Uh, that is the proper chain of command to follow up on a complaint of that nature. And then I would step away because it's not my job. Um. No matter what, I want people who. Speak up, uh, to feel like they were respected and heard.
Okay, um. Question number 16, being a director is a large commitment of time. How much time each week are you willing to spend? And that you would expect to spend on school board activities?
I don't know how good I'll be at this, but um, I know there's hours of time. Behind the scenes, reading and understanding the meeting materials. Learning the issues from all sides and then being prepared to do the work. Um, I love learning about things, so I consider that a good use of my time. Uh, I, other than a golden retriever, I don't have major distractions, so I, I, I think I do well, well in this area. I work extra hard at being known for being reliable, prepared and committed to any position I'm honored to fill. Uh, to give you an example, on the city council, I missed only one meeting in 12 years for a personal purpose. Um. I even stopped once when they didn't have a quorum. Because I was asked to, I was in the middle of the state driving and I joined by phone so that we could carry on. Uh, meeting as successfully and get the business done at the council. So that's the kind of person I am in terms of. Devotion to this. I make it a priority to accept as many invitations to. Events and activities as I possibly can. I take my own vacation time off. If things start to happen. In terms of activity during a day, or if I need to go to a conference or go lobby in Olympia, anywhere else. Um, I think it's vital to show up as part of my duty. Um, I think parents, educational professionals and students deserve to know that you care. And um. You really only get one chance to earn and keep their trust, and so. I just, any way I can immerse myself and be present and be there. Uh, and meet their expectations, I will, I will try. And um. I think I'm up for the work.
Director Parker, do you want to do the next one?
17, how should elected officials such as school board directors? Ensure that their entire constituency has a voice and not just those who are vocal and claim to speak for the majority?
So I mentioned a few things earlier on just, you know, how do we get the outreach, but I, I put a list together. Offer to have town hall online in a neighborhood, at a library or a community gathering pace, place. Send out a postcard with contact information so people can reach you. Same uh, same thing with business cards, you just hand them out. Um, go for a walk in various neighborhoods and talk with people who are out and about. Or in the parks. It's amazing the connections you make doing that. Attend community events and mingle with the other people at the event. Um, set up a meet your school board member booth at an event. Maybe at the school. Um, let people know that you want to hear what they think. Show up early or stay late to the board meetings that are in person. So people can talk with you, I guess. That's worked well in other meetings, boards and councils I've been on. Um, get out in the public at school sports events. Uh, or other places where people are gathering. Uh, offer to meet with groups in communities of faith or other community service centers. Where people bring their kids. And then set up ways for people to reach you through a website. Or place, uh, place a survey on the website so they can give you some feedback. So those are a few ideas. If you put me on the board, I won't do them all at once.
Thank you. Number 18, if a situation, discussion or agenda item were to become, to come to the board that could be potentially a conflict of interest, how would you handle it?
That's just ironclad. It's my responsibility to disclose that there's a potential conflict of interest publicly. And to take measures to avoid contributing to discussion, deliberation or taking actions such as. Voting by recusing myself. If the item is on the consent agenda, I'll let the presiding officer know. That it needs to be removed and placed on new business. And then I would again recuse myself from participating in the discussion, deliberation or taking action.
Great, thank you. And then our last question for you, which is pretty open and it more just kicks it to you. Is there anything else you'd like to share um, about you as a school director candidate that we may have felt to inquire about?
Well, I am a person who deserves the public and the community in any way she can, and I do it by, like, I'm covered with sticker. Rips all over my arms right now because I was down at the Duamish Preserve pulling out blackberry bushes. Um, I love rolling up my sleeves, helping out where I can in community. And uh, there was a big empty space in my world and it was odd. But uh, I'm, you know. Very open-minded. Uh, I was approached by three different. Sets of people who said, have you thought about running for, for the school board? And so that's why I came to a meeting, paid attention, I looked at the process and I applied. Because I would dearly love to lend my heart to make a better world for the students. That come to our school district. To improve work conditions. For the staff and faculty that work there. And to just keep raising the bar. We already have done it a couple of times. Um, we got, I'm really impressed by our superintendent. Um, I just want to keep taking it higher and higher to, to the point where people are jealous of the Takula. School district kids that come out of our area. They are our future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions um, or anything that folks would like to ask of Kate?
Us or Kate?
But I'm asking you if you have any questions for Kate.
Kate, you really want to do this?
You know, I've come to enough meetings, I, I know you're going through a lot right now and I just love solving problems. And in on, I watched your team and how they interact. I would have been a walk away if you guys didn't seem like you were working well together. I just, I feel. A sense of team and I feel a sense of everybody's got the students centered. And I, I, you know, you, I. You could take me off a cliff with those kinds of um. Those kinds of collaborative approaches and so, yeah, I'm ready to dig in. Uh, there's some hard decisions that are coming. But I think on the other side, it's going to make a difference for our kids and I think it's important. So, yeah.
Thank you.
I guess I do have two, one tiny follow-up question. Wouldn't be me if I didn't have one, I guess. Um. So reflecting a little bit on kind of what, how you responded to question eight, which was around um. Uh, advancing racial equity and um, you of course like named a lot of. Learning opportunities, trainings, workshops, ways in which you've um, increased your kind of awareness um, around racial equity. I think I'm just curious if you'd be willing to share, like, do you have any personal anecdotes? About like ways in which kind of those learnings have started to like change behavior or thought and response, um, things like that?
Um. Yes. And it's on a personal level, um, it's. Looking for ways to change opportunities so it's fair for everyone at work. So all those things. That I learn and absorb, I turn around and that's why I joined the ESJ community team. Because, and that's why I'm busy trying to change the way we get training because we have. Training opportunities that are given to some but not others. And I found out that each employee gets X amount of dollars per year, but they don't know it. And I found out persons of color have been turned down for years in a row while other people get favored. And I don't like it. And the only reason I. You know, I just feel like there's structural change and systemic change that could happen there. So we are asking the hard questions and pulling some data because that's what I do. I'm an IT person. But uh, I think I read somewhere and it sort of just kind of haunted me when I read it. Because I get up each morning and go. What can I do to make a positive change in terms of equity in the world around me? And what can I do to get myself out of the way? And reduce barriers? That I create or am part of. So I don't know, if you like that answer to your question, I just. I, I am trying to be the best ally I can be. And I'm trying to, and I experience. Uh, different kinds of diff. Um. Discrimination through disabilities and being a female. That means a lot to me to make those changes. For everyone.
Thank you. Yeah, that definitely did answer my question. Thank you. Um, all right, folks, anything else? I'm muted, but I don't know if that's just my. Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much, Kate, and um, we'll uh, you'll hear from me in the next couple of days. Um, we're gonna um. Chat a little bit, uh, we're going to move to executive session here in just a minute and then um, I'll be in touch.
Thank you uh, for me and let me have a chance to talk and. Learn more about you guys too. Um, just these questions make us do more research and. Center what we think on these things. So that was really good experience. Um, you can hit the eject button and go do your thing. Thanks a lot, everyone.
All right, thank you so much. All right, folks, um, so this is for um, everyone who is listening, who is not a board member. We are about to go into executive session to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to the elective office per RCW42. Dot three zero dot one one zero. Um, and I'd like to ask that everybody, again, who is not a board member, go ahead and. Leave the meeting. Uh, Deb, you should be able to give me um. Host uh, so that you can leave as well. Um, and we'll be in executive session till seven. Um, and then we'll come out and then uh, adjourn.
All right, please check participants to see if there's anyone in there.
I will.
Thank you.
I see one person still. Whoever is named community in the um, uh. If you could please uh, leave at this time as we head into executive session and we will be out of executive session at seven o'clock. All right, it is seven oh seven, um, and we are back from executive session and we'll move to adjourn our meeting.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I am.
Hi. All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Carly. Thank you, Dave.